Next item.
Citizen participation, citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are signed in by 7:10 p.m. by submitting a blue card to the board secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items, therefore speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names or students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. There's a three-minute time limit on comments made to the board. We have one blue card. Employee Cynthia Alvarado from Canton would like to come to speak to the board about the role of libraries in our schools.
First of all, thank you for the commendation. I saw my name up there. That was lovely. I just want to mention, and it's great that I'm coming right after this plan was discussed, and we do agree it's great to have standardization, but here's the problem. Every media specialist is actually a librarian. In fact, our state organization went from being media educators this year, going back to our original name of the Michigan Association of School Librarians, which means we have libraries. So the unfortunate side effect of this plan is that half of the elementaries had no certified staff. They had a secretary, but no certified staff. Now, in order to have any new books come in at all, you have to have a certified person who can enter those books into the specialized database, which controls the circulation, which is not only district-wide, but is throughout all of Wayne County RISA. It's specialized. We take courses about it as part of our master's degree. This is not something that can be done by a secretary. Now, those buildings were staffed with secretaries. They could circulate the books that were already there, but nothing new can go in when there's not a media specialist. So this is a problem that we need, I mean, I know this was a very kind of last-minute plan, but as we look towards a long-term vision, we need to solve this. For example, I've been at Salina Elementary for 15 years. I did not get to see four and five. I'll admit, I cheated and saw kindergarten even when I wasn't supposed to because I could and I could finesse it. But now that I have to go across the street to four and five, not only do I see them, which is fabulous, I'm super happy because I am the only one that's talking to them about things like digital literacy. I teach about AI. I've been teaching about AI as young as second grade for two years now, explaining data sets, explaining what, you know, the garbage-in, garbage-out concept and what was your data trained on and how does AI work. There's some very lovely things in code.org that let you show that at a very simplified level that elementary students can understand, and this is important. Also, media literacy, understanding what's true and what's not true. We are the original fact-checkers, and we know how to teach kids to check information. So while I'm very happy that we're able to see all the students, as was mentioned, we do have libraries to run, and when we are only in a building for a semester, there's nobody to run it, that other half of the semester. So I'm going to leave Salina Elementary after 15 years and knowing every book in that library and go to a different library that I've never been in before, and it takes about two years to figure out exactly what's in your library. So while I think on the whole, the plan has been very positive, we need to figure out what we're going to do about our libraries because it's a little problematic. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional?
Nope.
All right. Follow-up from previous board meetings. One thing that was mentioned at last month's board meeting was about hiring of teachers and background checks, and we ended up having an example within our own district after that last board meeting where we had requested background information from the previous employer. We didn't have it at the beginning of the school year. Once we did get that information, we immediately moved on that situation. Do you want to?
Sure. Yeah, and that was some of the stuff that we were talking to Lansing about was to make sure that districts can share information between districts, and that was something that we, as superintendent association, worked hard to make sure that that wasn't changed. There could be legislation coming in the spring, but they did not make any changes. So we have two things. One is the criminal background checks, and that's immediate. In fact, I've mentioned it here before, but that is also, you know, because you're in the system, if someone gets an arrest even after the fingerprints, you're in the system, I get a notification sent to me from the Michigan Department of Education through the state police, and HR then looks into it. It's with a special-coded number. We have to keep it all confidential, so there's these extra safety provisions. But part two is not necessarily any criminal activity or anything that would be in the courts, but maybe things that someone has a history of maybe not being so good for students or maybe staff. And so that's where we do, and HR does a great job of doing, you know, reference checks, but not just calling the previous employer, previous supervisors, and others, and that kind of information we get. We also have, by state law, called them misconduct form, and that's where this information came up. It's nothing criminal. It's just, you know, we have a large staff members, 2,700 employees, and if we can get that information, it's very important. And so in this case, we got that form, and this individual is not working with us. But again, it was nothing, in this case, it was nothing necessarily to harm students, but it's stuff that, you know, we want employees at the top, and so it's very important that we have that ability to share that information, and HR jumped on it almost immediately and intervened.
Thank you very much. Any trustees have any items from board commentary, I'm sorry, from citizen participation, either from this meeting or previous meetings to follow up on? There was also a request for an investigation based on events that happened at one of the schools. I believe that we've just about wrapped up our portion of the investigation, where now we've sent it over, I think, to our attorneys, and then we'll start moving forward with the next steps. Is that accurate?
Yeah, there will be a notification given to the complainant family.
Okay. All right, next item.
Action items. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
I don't know if there was anything that needed to be pulled. Trustee Mosip, did you have a?
On question 19, or I'm sorry, on agenda item 19, those staff members says whose identity is known by the board, were those sent to us because they were?
Yeah.
It was in board briefs on Thursday.
Just one more thing to add to the item number 19 that trustee Mosip was just saying. It's not clear. It needs to be vague, but I just want to make sure that people are aware that the information that will be given is nothing that is personal and to the fact that it's, they can't give out, we can't take any medical information, anything like that, that isn't allowed by law. So that is not happening, and I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Dr. Maleko?
Yeah, and I can clarify that because we have two separate, two legal opinions that are, they agree with each other from Mr. Gibbons and Mr. Banasak, and so there is some, as the board does vote, to look at these files. There's a few things that will have to happen. One is there is this separate medical record that is kept separate, so the board wouldn't necessarily get access to that, but what the board would get access to the personnel files. Now, here's the thing, and even our employees, when they inspect the files, you'd have to go into HR and do it in the HR offices, and this comes from legal counsel. So Ms. Ali Bazey will send the board an email after, and you can set up an appointment to go to HR and review the files. So that's how you'd have to look at those files. They have to be kept in HR. They're electronic. And the other legal requirement is that we do have to notify those, either former or current employees, that the board has voted to look at their files, so they have to legally be notified.
And then in regard to number 19, if we choose to go and look at the file, it is confidential?
Correct. It's highly confidential.
Right, so we cannot share it?
Correct.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and make the motion before I ask a question also on that item. But I didn't hear anyone wanting anything voted on separately or pulled. All right, if you can state the?
Recommended action, move that action items numbered 1 through 20 be approved as recommended in this agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by trustee Mosip, supported by trustee Barry. One additional question that I've got on number 19 is, are we making this information available for just a limited amount of time to the trustees? Or do the trustees think we want to, if we open one of these, do we want to have unlimited access going forward, or do we want to put a window that we're allowed to do this, whether it's this item or other similar items?
I think I'd be comfortable with a window. I don't think it should be all access now.
I agree, and the fact that you have to physically go to HR to see it helps with that, I think, as well.
Okay.
I wouldn't have a problem with that, as long as there's enough time for everybody to get there.
Which would be the next thing. What time do we think is reasonable? I would think like a month should be reasonable.
You're saying a month from tonight?
Yeah.
Why don't we say?
Well, all right.
Why don't we say about end of the year?
Yeah, yeah, because we're dealing with holidays and things. We're saying by the end of the year, but the district will be?
There'll be certain days where it's closed effective the 25th, so it'd have to be by the 25th of December, or the 24th, actually.
I would say if this is, I mean, if we're going to set precedence, I think it needs to be 30 days. I mean, I don't think we should say the end of the year. I would say like there's a certain amount of days.
Unless that's something that we would do in a separate action item for future requests like this? I would think we can, we could say till the end of the year for this one, but then we could, at a future time, just say that when we do this, it's a 30-day window?
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I think with the holidays, yeah. I mean, probably with the holidays, it probably would be 30 days, so, yeah.
Okay.
I think it was also mentioned anyway, going forward, we would have some kind of policy with parameters and stuff anyway, so.
So does that mean that we need to amend anything in this action item, or can we move forward knowing that that's what we're all agreeing on?
We're all agreeing here, we're all at the table, so.
Yeah, minutes and minutes.
Okay. Thanks, everyone, for their opinion on that one. Any additional discussion on any of the action items? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Summary of agenda action items. Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of an award to Procedio Holdings, Inc., and Data Image Systems. Number three, approval of an amendment to Securea Tech Contract. Number four, approval of an amendment to Green Schoolyards Consultant Contract. Number five, approval of an award to Doma Technologies. Number six, approval of an award to Lebroke LLC. Number seven, approval of an award to Follett School Solutions LLC. Number eight, approval of an award to Next Generation Environmental. Number nine, approval of an award to Purvis and Foster. Number 10 through 13, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P-12. Number 14, approval of financial statement per board report 23 hyphen 62. Number 15, approval of 2024-2026 strategic plan. Number 16, approval of director and alternate director to the MAISL Joint Risk Management Trust. Number 17, approval of the 2023-2024 superintendent goals. Number 18, approve the resolution for the Dearborn Public Schools Operating Millet Renewal Proposal prepared by legal counsel per board report 23 hyphen 64.
Irene Solon.
Oh, I thought it was, I'm sorry. Number 19, approval of board request to review personnel item, I'm sorry, to see what happens, to review personnel files, and number 20, approval of donations.
Trustee Barry.
Yes, one of the items we just passed is a strategic plan. Where's Faraj? How beautiful, huh? So it was four meetings, about 50 to 60 people in this room, the fifth place, Dr. Maleko, cabinet, a leader through this process was Director Faraj. So I'd like to thank everybody, the staff, parents, students. Thank you to the students and the parents, and what I've realized, that I sat in on a committee, I realized it was a lot of business leaders, too, who took their input in, so that was very helpful. So I just want to take this opportunity to thank everybody that put in a lot of time to this. I know Dr. Maleko has some things he wanted to say.
Yeah, and I would like to thank Ms. Faraj, Mr. Silvery, the committee. They did a great job. Thank the board for support. We do have three, I believe, committee members here, Dr. Bazey, Ms. El Tomonte, and Ms. Hyder. So if we could give them, show our appreciation.
I just wanted to add that this is the second time we've had it have a page like this, a one-pager, that lays out what the strategic plan is and all the parts, and I have heard from so many people that that makes it real, it makes it workable, it keeps it in people's minds, so not just in the district, but in other places. They have just absolutely commented, and I'm talking students, staff, and other districts all over. They've commented what a great idea this is, and it makes it usable. So again, kudos for just the format, too.
And when I was at the, we were presenting on Student Voice in the summer, the same presentation that you did, President Thorpe, one of the things, we did have this in one of the slides, and the school board members from other districts across the state love this as well. They commented on it specifically, so thank you for mentioning it.
I just realized that this one has the QR codes.
Already on it.
For all the information. How about that?
And there's going to be a presentation to the board on the strategic plan in December, correct?
January.
January, all right. So as we're starting the new year, we'll have a presentation on it. Next item, please.
Next item, Board of Education Business Acknowledgements of Correspondence. Oh, I'm sorry, discussion item, there is none. Board of Education Business Acknowledgement of Correspondence.
Just so the board is reminded, there's a few pieces of mail here that we all got. Now, these were sent over the last couple of weeks since our last meeting. Each of those times, Ms. Harris will scan them, email them to us, and then we get the original. Now, if you don't want the originals, just let her know, but if not, she will give you the originals at the next meeting. I believe I was including all the trustees on all the emails that I was responding to over the last month. Next item?
Board member.
Oh, I'm sorry, was there any other correspondence?
I just have to mention this. You've probably heard some of the comments I've made, both at graduation and even at board meetings and just going around the district and interacting with students, is about kindness to each other, and I received this wonderful correspondence from Miller Elementary saying, "Happy World Kindness Week." It's from the kindness squad at Miller, and they, all the students signed it. I don't know if that, but it was, I probably won't see it, but anyway, I just thought it was something I needed to highlight here because I think it's great, and it's a time when we need to be kind to each other and support each other as we go through different challenges.
Thank you. Trustee McDonald?
Just on that note, we all need to be part of a kindness squad, so I just love that.
Yeah, the squad, right? What a better group.
Absolutely.
Thanks. Next item?
Board Member Committee and Organization Reports. It's okay, I'll go ahead and talk about policy. So the policy committee meeting met earlier today. We had quite a robust conversation. I just want to thank trustee McDonald and trustee Barry. We've been diligent, and we've been very proactive as to getting through some of our items. We did discuss the updating the LE, the boundary line exemption. We had asked for some feedback from administration, and this was something that we have heard back, that we will continue to finish out the school year with the boundary line exemption. However, beginning in 2024, we will no longer have that as a policy. The other thing that we had looked through was the bullying behavior policy, 5517.01. This is something that I'd asked each individual board member to review and give me feedback on, so thank you for the feedback. It was seven pages, I'm sorry, probably four pages of policy that was antiquated and needed updating. It was a very good discussion with everyone's feedback in there. We will be revamping it and restructuring it somewhat. It doesn't necessarily speak to cyberbullying, so we will be putting a definition into what cyberbullying is, what are examples of cyberbullying. Also, there is a section in here as to what school responsibilities would look like, and so that's something that we realized was probably outdated, so we're going to give it back to the school administrators and ask for feedback from principals. We wanted to have a more holistic feedback from not only the principals, but the teachers, the students, with parent involvement as well. So that's something that we will be brought back to the policy committee. We'll review that, and as things move forward, we'll be updating you, but that's something that we have felt is a foundation that every school building needs to have with autonomy, knowing that each school building may have their own challenges. So we don't necessarily want to handcuff them and say you have to do X, Y, and Z in terms of what the previous policy says in terms of having three events. Perhaps those events can be subbed out for something that is more attainable and effective for the building levels across the district. Because of that, we were not able to get to all of the policies, but one of the things that we did get to was in, with Oxford, they came through with a several hundred pages of recommendations that the investigation had found, and with that was a failure on several parts that dealt with policies and/or guidelines that were not being implemented. This is something that I had brought forward to the policy committee and thought that it was important to make sure that, as horrific as that was, that it never happens again. So that was something that I had shared with the board, I'm sorry, with the policy committee and with Danielle Alzner, making sure that our policies are put in place, that we have the proper forms, the proper process, so this is never, we don't have to have that discussion, but wanted to make sure that that was taken, that discussion was had and whatnot. And then with that as well, there was some discussion about perhaps revisiting some topics that years ago were brought up and perhaps never pursued, and trustee McDonald had mentioned, and we were talking about bullying and mental health, suicide prevention, and what would that look like in those discussions that may be had. And then from what I'm hearing today, I'm also hearing that we have not had that policy meeting yet about AI and what the place AI has in our building level, and also what the policy that you had mentioned just about the personnel files. So as things are being brought up, just making sure that future boards have that information. Is there anything that I missed, trustee McDonald?
I just wanted to say something because the information that was given from the Oxford report is very expansive. You said it was like 500 pages, I think, and there's not necessarily a one-on-one correlation of what's listed in that report as something that is actually in our policies, although there may be something similar, it just won't be necessarily the same language. So there may be a little need to delve into it and make sure that, okay, this isn't exactly what we have, but what we have over here does match the intention of what this was.
Correct, yes.
So you might need a little finagling. It may take some time, but I think that's outstanding, and I think it's something that needs to be.
Right, so if a parent says, do they have this specific form? We may not necessarily have a form, but we may have a process, so do not be alarmed and say, well, they don't have this.
Right.
Yeah, so that's something that we're working to make sure that we are, we are not slipping, that nothing's slipping through the cracks, that we're not looking at. Anything else, trustee Barry, that?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much for that report. I had also, I think, brought it up to Dr. Maleko as the Oxford report was released to make sure we're reviewing it, see what we can learn and implement to help out in our district. Any other committee reports in the last month? I don't believe there were. So I've got a question I wanted to pose to the trustees because I'm already starting to think about next year. Usually in January, we reform the committees, and one thing that I was wondering is, the policy committee meets much more often than any other committee that we've got between the two entities. Do trustees, are we open to the idea of possibly splitting responsibility for that committee and maybe having three trustees for P-12 and three different trustees for the community college? Because we're asking those three people to spend an awful lot of time, you can pretty much assume two additional meetings per month if we're trying to do what we've stated about getting caught up or ahead of the curve on policy. I'm not necessarily looking for an answer now, but I want us to think about that one as we move forward with an organizational meeting and setting up subcommittees for next year. So thanks for giving that one some consideration. Next item?
Board Member and Superintendent Commentary. I was going to say, I can go ahead, and I think part of this, and I'm looking at the strategic plan, that our focus number two was about a lot that we're doing with the policy, but I think the care to the core was something that I wanted to see at the beginning of the school year, and attending, it was, it made my day. The kids were wonderful. I think it was great to be able to see, like, walk their neighborhood with them at Salina. They took such pride in that, and it was just a great discussion to be with the children and to see it through their eyes and their students. So I just wanted to say thank you to the, to the district and to everyone who put that together.
Dr. Maleko?
Just quickly, I know I mentioned at the beginning, but I do want to thank my team, the executives, and everybody for stepping up. They rotate acting soup, but Ms. Faraj was acting soup for a week and a half, an extra half week, and then Mr. Assaly jumped in, but they all jump in, and I know they're just wondering if I'm at a conference or something because you know what's coming up in the next few months, right? The weather. So those are the tough ones coming up, so they usually don't jump at those acting soups, but I do want to thank our team, my team, for stepping up for me again, and thank you to the board for your understanding and support, and those that I missed events. Thank you.
A comment that I'll make is, this past weekend was Veterans Day. I know that there was a ceremony over at Lori. I know that the city had a ceremony, so thank you to all those that have served in the military. We appreciate what you've done for our country. Any, trustee McDonald?
And always, you got to thank the families as well for their sacrifice.
Very true. Next item?
Next item, Request for Information and/or Future Agenda Items. This is just a reminder that we do need to have a study session for our organizational meeting.
Which means that we would need to find some time between now and the organizational meeting, which would be in January, for us to do that. Main purposes would be to let Dr. Maleko and President Cavalluna give us an eyeball look at what they see coming in 2024, and then just to kind of revisit things that we had talked about when we did this last year. So what we could do is circulate some possible dates. I'm always reluctant to put another item on our calendars, so I don't know if one possibility would be after the college meeting next Monday. I don't know yet what that agenda looks like, but we could look at that, so be on the lookout for some communication on that one. If we do choose to do that day, we'll have to get it in the books quick so that we can let the public know about it. Additional Request for Information or Future Agenda Items?
I don't know if this is a request for information for right now, but it might be just something that I just thought about, about the millet proposal that we will have in February. So with the communication plan that we're going to have to the residents, will that start immediately since we have approved the ballot language now, as far as the information available to the public to see what's going to be on the ballot in both languages?
Short answer.
Like, how soon can we?
We've been preparing a lot of the information, getting ready for tonight so that we can launch a lot tomorrow. I know we have the outstanding Manar Kudumar here, who has been doing just an outstanding job translating some information for us, and we're going to put a lot on her plate in the next couple of weeks here as more information is going to get out there, but yeah, so you'll see a lot coming out here within the next, within the next month or so. We'll be pushing it out, and it all starts tomorrow.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One thing that I brought up to Dr. Maleko earlier today was, there's been reports that we've seen recently, incident reports, on attacks, violence towards our staff, so a review of whether it's policies, student code of conduct, to make sure that we are taking care of the people that are taking care of our students. I don't need a presentation on that.
Some data.
Maybe some data, but I think that would probably be an item that would float more towards policy to make sure.
And that was something that we had discussed today in our policy committee with the bullying, and then we're also going to be looking at the code of, student code of conduct and harassment as well, so yes.
Thanks.
So just leave it to policy committee?
I think so.
Okay.
Anything else for that item? Next item?
Future meeting dates, Monday, November 20th, 2023, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom. Monday, December 4th, 2023, P-12 Board Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Francie Boardroom. And Monday, December 11th, 2023, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 p.m. at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom.
Wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving. We hope you get a chance to spend it with your loved ones and your friends. We're adjourned. We're adjourned.